This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our June Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Fried, North Haven's first selectman, joined, as always, by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buwemi. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item number two, any public comments to this evening's agenda? Item number three, the approval of the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of May 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 2nd meeting.
I'll second that motion by Sally, that approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
A motion for the approval of the special Board of Selectmen meeting on May 24th, 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number five, ladies and gentlemen, no slides tonight, but myself and Sally and Bill would like to make a very important announcement, and that is regarding next week's referendum. So, as you know, we failed the first referendum, and we had to work very feverishly here at Town Hall to understand how quickly we needed to get ballots and how to post this in terms of posting it in the newspapers that were required by the Town Government Charter. So what we are doing now, as many people already know, I'll be back at the high school on Monday night, June 10th, re-presenting a revised budget. That budget will show reductions that are a mixture of reductions and added revenue of approximately $1,774,000, which will bring the mill rate from where it failed at 2.65 down to 1.99. Then, on Tuesday, June 11th, we will have another referendum. I can't stress, ladies and gentlemen, how important it is to come out and vote, and I know that Bill and Sally share this, so Sally, I'll turn it over to you first.
Yes, I really hope a lot of people will come out and vote. We did have 1,299 people vote on May 21st, which was 7.6% of our almost 17,000 registered voters, so let's see if we could do better than that. I just wanted to say, you didn't mention that the Budget Town Meeting is at 7:00. And because it's a budget referendum, all voting is at the Rec Center from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and it's a little unusual for the referendum to be the day after the Budget Town Meeting, so I hope people will realize that and get out on the 11th and vote. We had no choice. Usually, we have an eight-day period of time in between, but we really couldn't afford to do that with the time constraints of getting the tax bills printed out and out on time.
And the ballots?
And getting the ballots, yes.
And the absentee ballots also.
So please come out and vote June 11th, Tuesday, at the Rec Center.
Bill?
Along the same line, I've already been doing that. I've been reminding, I mean, even for the previous referendum and even other elections, is that, you know, the, I think we look back to a year ago when the budget passed, the prior year, you know, we had only half the number of people come out, which, you know, may be an indication or may not of a lot of people being satisfied or a lot of people not knowing, or both. So I think even if you are satisfied or if you're not satisfied, it's important that you vote. And I've done for a number of years, and I know Mike and Sally have done the same, is remind your friends, your family, your neighbors to vote, because sometimes we're all busy. You know, we went through the pandemic where everything was, you know, broken up, discombobulated, whatever. You know, when you lose track that all of a sudden it's time to do this today, because, you know, because some of the days, especially with people working at home, you know, with obligations with family or children, it becomes so difficult to remember all the things that you have to do that it's easy to lose sight that, you know, you have an important obligation to vote for our town budget to make sure we're properly funded to continue to provide services for both Town Government and the Board of Education. So get the word out, you know, we're, I think the town of North Haven, through Mike's leadership, has tried to do its best to get the word out, you know, that they're, and, you know, Sally, through some of the things that she's written in local, in the local newspapers where she has regular, I think, a regular column, which a lot of people do read, remind people that we have a, you know, we have a Budget Town Meeting and a referendum on the dates that we just mentioned, that everybody needs to do their own part to further publicize the fact that it's important to vote, you know. And, you know, it, I think everybody has to make their own decision on whether, you know, the budget is important, but I think we're at a point where, as Mike said, it needs to be voted on sooner than later, so it can pass, so that the town can actually be funded for our next fiscal year, which begins July 1st.
So I want to also reference, and Sally and Bill, feel free to chime in, we've tried to do our best on this, but I've gotten some criticism. A couple of people have said that I haven't done enough in terms of promoting these referendums. Now, I responded by saying, gee, we've had six months' worth of meetings, all filmed, all streamed live on Facebook, budget workshop sessions, department by department. There've been people in this room watching these budget workshops. Again, streamed on NHTV, newspaper articles, headline articles in the Courier and in the North Haven Post, whatever that paper is that comes every month, or every week, I should say. So, and the response back was, well, it's not enough, you have to do more. All right, well, we're trying to do everything we can, but just so everyone knows, when people say to me, how come there's not signs all over town? The town cannot put signs on private property. The town only has the ability to put signs on its own building's property. So maybe we can increase some signage on some of the town buildings in the future. We just can't arbitrarily put signs all over town. Can't do it on private property. We have an Everbridge system. Some people have said to me, how come you can't do a rowboat call, Mike? We can't. The Everbridge system is just for storms and emergency management. So I look at it and say, I think we've tried to do everything we can. Some people don't see it that way. So what we're going to continue to do is to have our own conversations with our own groups of stakeholders, and for those watching who don't know what that is, I have access to thousands of people here in North Haven by meeting with them and talking with them. We've been talking this budget up. Some of those people don't follow social media. Some of, many of those people don't read the newspapers. Some of those people aren't on Facebook, as an example. So we're having the dialogue with them. So what we're going to be doing is continuing to use social medium as a platform to announce that there will be, coming up next week, on social media, Valerie is going to be posting this after this meeting, talking about the meeting on the 10th, where I'll be re-presenting the budget at 7:00. Showing what the revised budget reflects in terms of dollar changes, that $1,174,000. In red, there'll be something on that says about the referendum on the 11th. Now, if someone else has other suggestions as to what we're just talking about here, I'm open to them, but short of knocking on every door in North Haven and reminding people, I truly don't know what more we can do. Sally, what do you think?
Yeah, well, I was pleased with the amount of, with the quantity, I'll emphasize, the quantity of local newspaper coverage. There were mistakes, as you know, often, in the facts about the budget, confusing mill rate increase with a number of the increase versus percentage. People get that confused, and that makes me crazy. But overall, the quantity of coverage was better. I think, is this going to be on the town's website? Because I wasn't sure that the first referendum was on the website, but, or if it was, you know, it wasn't front and center.
I think it was on the front page, on the front page of the website.
Oh, okay. Okay. Because I had, yeah. But, I mean, I don't have to go there to, no, I know when it is, but I heard from some folks that said, we can't find it on the website, so I don't know.
All right.
But I thought, I mean, I agree with you. We've had six months of workshops, the Budget Public Hearing on April 9th, the Budget Town Meeting was the second Monday in May, I forget the date, I think it was the 13th. And, you know, we've both been quoted in the paper, we've written in the paper, and so I think what you're saying about spreading the word amongst your friends and family is very important.
Right.
I talked to a woman I know, her and her husband, who are going to be out of town on the 11th, and I reminded her that, you know, she could get an absentee ballot to vote, you know, and a lot of people might be on vacation. I mean, we're, you know, looking at the time of year where people will be gone, so. So the more that, you know, the more that, you know, if everybody can further help out in terms of talking to your neighbors, family, friends, coworkers, whatever, that might live in town, and they get, you know, it's probably about all you can do to get more people to vote.
The other part to this is that, and this is under the category of for what it's worth. As I've said here many, said here many times, I have friends with mayors and first selectmen all over the state. In this form of government, it's consistently a low turnout on budget referendums throughout the state, so it's not just North Haven. In a council form of government, the council votes, so the people really don't have a choice. So those are, the council votes, I don't know of one town or one city that blasts out on social media or does press releases that there's a council meeting tonight to discuss a budget. It's almost like seven or nine people make the decision. Here, we've got all these meetings televised. Here, we have, we've utilized social media. We have, we've encouraged reporters to come in here. Brian Zahn was here last time from the New Haven Register, Aaron Rubin from the North Haven Courier, not the Post, the Courier, and of course, the North Haven Citizen. So I'm open for other suggestions as to what more we could do, but I'm not sure what more we could do. You've written countless articles, Sally.
Yes, and, you know, we are fortunate that we have a form of government where every registered voter is a legislator. This is your opportunity to legislate and vote yes or no. We are all supporting this budget this time around. It's no secret that I opposed the first one, but I fully support this one, and I hope people will come out and vote yes, but more importantly, I just hope they come out and vote, however it goes.
Right.
Please come out and vote. Thank you.
And one last point.
See, and I think we've talked about this before, as opposed to having nine or seven or nine or 11 people on a city council make the decision, you know, we as voters can do that. So it's really an honor on one hand, and it's an obligation on another. You know, we don't want to go, I don't want to go, and I think the other, you know, Mike and Sally would agree, that we don't want to have a city council. We'd rather have our, you know, our neighbors, our family, our friends vote and participate in the decision-making process. So I think, you know, live up to your, the honor that you have, that you can vote by fulfilling your obligation to the best of your ability on the day that the polls are open, and they open at 6:00 a.m. to, what, 8:00 p.m. I guess is the typical time.
Right.
You know, so you've got plenty of opportunity. And there've been a few times when I, when I was working that I literally got, I was able to finally leave work and get here at about 2 minutes to 8:00 to be able to vote. But I somehow made it based on coming from Bridgeport or Shelton, you know, it was that important to me that I didn't miss the vote. So please, please, please do vote.
I'll make, I'll make one final point, and I think Mary and Tom White, who are here, they've been in town a long time, so I've also been told repeatedly by people who've lived here for many, many years that, and I never realized this, I'm the only first selectman in the history of North Haven that actually presents a budget. And in the past, they would just pass out budget books at meetings, and the finance director would answer questions. Here we are, Valerie and I, we spent hours and hours putting PowerPoint presentations together, showing all the numbers, the details. People tell me, no one's ever done that, Mike, before you got here. So we've tried to take it to a different level here. Mary and Tom are nodding because they know, so.
And I don't remember, a lot of the other people, Sally goes back a long time ago to being a Board of Finance member, and I spent eight years on the Board of Finance. And, you know, I'm not sure that's true, even in the, that would be true in the past, but the other thing I think that is important is that Sally and I go to every Board of Finance meeting as well, you know, and as, not as members of the Board of Finance, Mike is, but as members of the audience to listen to the meeting and the presentations that are being made in person. And I can't remember the last time I've missed the Board of Finance meeting over the last 14 years, and I think that, I can't remember you missing one either, Sally.
I've missed maybe three or four in 11 years, so not bad, but...
Not very many.
No, no.
So, you know, I think, I think this obviously is the core of finance, and having a budget is the core of the services that the town provides, and including what's necessary, you know, for all the services we have, and police, fire, public works, the library, but also for the Board of Education. So I think we can't stress enough that it's important to vote.
I know I said one final point, but Bill just mentioned something. We also have met with the Board of Education, they've gotten the PTAs out to get the word out, with, those are thousands of parents in North Haven. So we're trying to utilize the penetration points all over. But some people don't, don't think it's enough. So for those people that don't think it's enough, I'd like a written plan from you to tell me exactly what more we could do. Send it to my attention. There's only a couple of them, by the way, so. I'd like to see a written plan with specific identification points as to what more you'd like to see. All right.
On the other end of the spectrum, I believe now, and again, I haven't, I read that several years ago, that just like you get a parking fine in Australia, if you do not vote, you get fined. So, I mean, that, I don't, I don't advocate that, but, but, you know, there are some places, and I believe, if I remember, I'm absolutely sure my memory is correct, but I haven't verified whether it's still true. If you don't vote, you get a, you get a fine, which further helps the financial state of whatever state in Australia that you're living in, so. So we don't want to do that. So do not suggest that.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Sally. Go ahead, Sally.
Oh, my agenda item.
Yes.
Yes, we're, we, I appreciate you putting my item on the agenda, as you always do. I just wanted to share with you that I did get a correspondence about a week ago from Neil Lillo. He and I have been corresponding since 2013, when I first got elected, and we do it by mail. Look at his beautiful cursive writing.
He's got great writing, he does.
Yes, and we usually, we've often talked about town affairs, but we have also talked about our shared love of American history. And so he wrote to me to remind me that the Board of Selectmen meeting is on a very important day in military history, and so I, and he said, he asked if I would just talk about it for a bit. He's concerned that younger generations don't know or study history enough, so either way, I think it's important for this board, as the leading administrative board of the town, to acknowledge today as the 80th anniversary of D-Day, which was June 6th of 1944. Of course, that was the day the Allied troops invaded to the Five Beaches in Normandy, Utah, and Omaha by the Americans, and there was gold in Juneau and sword by the British and the Canadians. And a lot of historians call June 6th, 1944, as the first day of the end of World War II. 4,414 fatalities with the Allied forces on that day, 2,501 Americans. I think the world held their breath. It was very tough going, but they managed to get a stronghold, and by the end of the day, 160,000 Allied troops had landed on the Five Beaches. And of course, the Battle of Normandy ensued for the next couple of months. By the end of August, Paris was liberated with other cities' liberations to follow in the months after, and so I think it is fitting that we acknowledge the 80th anniversary of the D-Day invasion tonight. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Lillo, for reminding me.
Thank you, Mr. Lillo. He's a wonderful man, that man, the United States Navy.
Korean veteran, yes.
Korean veteran, yes. And by the way, if you're watching, I ran into your brother-in-law twice since the last time I saw you, Neil, so I'll have to tell you what he had to say the next time we see each other. But thank you very much for writing Sally that letter.
Yes, he's watching, for sure. So thank you, so we can move on.
Okay.
And I had the, I was fortunate enough a few years ago to actually visit the memorial in Normandy, and be at Omaha Beach and Utah Beach, and St. Mary's Glee, so, you know, it was, I think if people have been watching, I think Channel 8 has been spotlighting it, and I unfortunately was not able to see the special last night, but they did take a number of World War, World War II veterans to France, through Paris, to Normandy, to go to the beach again.
Yeah, 180 went.
Something like that, right?
41 were actually D-Day veterans. I mean, they have to be 98 at least.
And the nice thing too is I think they also took, which acknowledged, you know, which I think, I think increasingly acknowledged, is they took some women who were not obviously at Normandy, but contributed through, like the Rosie, the Riveter.
Oh, sure, yeah.
The industrialization program back home to support the war, they actually also got to go to Normandy. So it was a nice event for, you know, for the very few remaining World War II veterans that are still with us. Many of whom had, in that group, had been, had been actually, had actually been there on the, on D-Day on June 6th, 1944.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Item number seven, the approval of the 2025 Board of Selectmen meeting dates. Meetings will be here, this place upstairs, conference room number one, North Haven Town Hall, and the meetings will be on the first Thursday of every month. Here are the dates for your review, Sally and Bill.
At 6:30, we should also say that.
6:30.
Do we have to, do you want us to read these dates into the record?
We can, if you like, and then we can just vote to approve them.
Well, they're all for 2025, January 2nd, February 6th, March 6th, April 3rd, May 1st, June 5th, July 3rd, August 7th, September 4th, October 2nd, November 6th, December 4th.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion for those dates.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, Sally and Bill.
Yeah, I'll start. We have some reappointments here. I'll make a motion for the reappointment of James H. Iovino, 600 Washington Avenue, Unit F4, to the Blight Prevention Appeals Board for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2026.
I'll second his reappointment.
All right, we have a motion and a second, in discussion. James, if you're watching, thank you for your continued service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is, I'll motion for the reappointment of James D. Nezdale, 22 Mansfield Road, to the Blight Prevention Appeals Board for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. James, thank you for your service. I know years and years ago, you approached me, this was like a passion for yours, for you, and this, ladies and gentlemen, is not an easy board, the Blight Commission, because they hear a lot. So I thank them for their service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Lynn Frederickson, 95 Poo Road, to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2026.
I'll second Lynn's reappointment.
All right. Lynn, thank you for your agreeing to serve on this commission. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
A motion for the reappointment of Martin Rudnick, 128 Summer Lane, Cemetery Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2026.
All right, through a second.
Oh, a second.
Yep. All right, motion and a second. Marty, thanks for your service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next.
Yes, we have two bond releases. I'll take the first one. It is P. 13-28 for 346 State Street. The amount of the original bond was $2,500. The current balance of the bond is $2,500. I will make a motion to release the entire bond balance of $2,500 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second that bond release.
All right, motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the other bond release, I'll make a motion for, regarding number P. 14-09, 346, 346 State Street as well. The amount of the original bond was $5,000. The current balance of the bond is 5,000. I'll make a motion to release the entire bond balance of $5,000 with the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 13, I will make a motion to approve the property tax refunds reflected in our agenda.
Again, there's only, what, four?
Yeah.
And they're all small amounts, and I'll second those property tax refunds.
Thank you. Motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item 14, the next meeting here of the Board of Selectmen is Thursday, July 11th. The first Thursday is July 4th, so this is the 11th, our next meeting, here at 6:30 p.m. at North Haven Town Hall. Item number 15, public comment. Mary White.
Mary White, Summer Lane. So I would like to start with saying how much I appreciate the public comment portion of this meeting and the board's support of the public comment. I think that that's really great. Next, I'd like to ask the board three questions. So I think I know the answer to these questions, but I just want to ask the questions, if that's all right. So the first question is, does the Board of Selectmen support public safety, both police and fire?
Yes.
Yes.
Goes without saying.
Absolutely, okay. I thought so. Second question, does the Board of Selectmen support the two police officers being placed in the employment table unfunded in the budget?
Well, that's, let me start the answer by saying, I know it sounds confusing, but there will be two, if this budget passes, there will be two officers hired, so that's definitely going to happen. So I'd have to double-check, I believe they will be in the employment table, so.
Yes, I believe the key is unfunded, and it was stated at the last Board of Finance meeting that the police chief is going to find the funding, you know, within his budget.
He's already found it, actually, so.
Yeah, actually, he found it. Okay, that's good.
So that's definitely going to happen.
So the three of you support the two police officers?
Yes.
In that employment table, unfunded, and, but they're going to be funded, so therefore they can be hired. Okay, great.
I believe it's done that way to preserve the spots, because we've established that you cannot change the employment table in mid-fiscal year, so without, depending upon the amount of money involved, without Board of Finance or Town Meeting approval, so by keeping them in there, even though unfunded, it allows for them to be funded from other sources under that statute, 7349, I think it is. So they could still be... So they could still be, be funded.
Okay.
So I support that, that system because the chief has been able to find funding elsewhere, without it being, without it being a expenditure burden on the budget.
Okay, yes.
Yep.
So my third?
I'm definitely in favor of, you know, the, you know, we, there are so many light items, as, as we all know from anybody that does go to the Board of Finance or the refer, you know, the Budget Town Meetings, when you look at all the line items, there's a lot of different things in there. And, you know, we, I'm very much in favor of not micromanaging, you know, that's why we have a police chief or a fire chief or a head of public works or, you know, the person, a person to run the senior center of the library is, is, you know, just like in, in working in the private sector. You know, you have a budget and you need to work on that budget. And sometimes you make adjustments among different line items, you know. So, you know, to, you know, I think we, we struggled with higher tipping fees and gas and oil prices and electricity and things like that. And those are just other items that sometimes you might have to pull money from a different line item to, to actually make things meet so you can provide the services. So that's exactly what I think is happening in this case.
Okay, good. So my third question is, would the Board of Selectmen support a motion at the June tenth budget hearing to add two firefighters to the employment table unfunded?
I'd have, I, I don't know. And I'm only hesitating because we just met with the union president, the union vice president and the chief about a plan for next year's budget. So I don't know where they would stand on that. I don't know how we would, how we would do that and fund it elsewhere, I'm not really sure. So I'd have to say at this point, no. I'd have to talk to the fire department, but we just had a major meeting with them about planning for next year's budget. Sally?
I also think, what, what came to mind after you asked that question was an issue that we had with the ordinance for the tax abatement for surviving spouses of, of first responders who die in the performance of their duties. There was talk about a motion to change the ordinance at the town meeting. And town council advised us that because it was, it's already been in the paper, the whole budget, not, not each five, not all five hundred line items, but the, the summary of the budget, which is, I think, page three of the budget, has all the categories, it's already been posted with our notice for the hearing. And I believe town council told us that we couldn't change the ordinance because it had been published and we can't. And so it's not only a question of, of future plans and what, what can be funded or not funded for this year for the fire department, but I think it's a legal question about changing a budget that's already been noticed.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so this particular motion is unique because when you're talking about changing the budget. So my counter to that is that this would not change the mil rate, that this would not change the budget, you know, up or down. This would be net neutral. It would also be healthier and safer for the firefighters who now are having to work overtime when they're supposed to be off. And when a firefighter is off on vacation, personal sick, on a shift with ten firefighters, making it now a shift of nine, this causes there to be a mandatory contractual overtime paid for a firefighter to bring that shift back up to ten. The fire chief can utilize the contractual overtime replacement line item, which is over a million dollars now. And the fire chief provided a report to the Board of Finance months ago that illustrated an eleven-man shift saves minimum, minimum, ninety thousand dollars. And that was after analyzing the eleven-man shift for nine months with three months not included. This means that the actual savings is higher. So that, that would be my, my counter to that. And I also would like to know, this is a town meeting form of government. So if this motion is presented at this budget hearing, and there would be, so there would be a motion, and then there would be a second, and then there would be discussion, and then there would be a vote. So obviously, the three of you, it sounds like, are going to vote no. But what if the majority of the people want two firefighters? And what if the majority of the people, or not majority, but what if a certain number of people were, who voted no on this budget, did so because two firefighters were not included in the budget? So what if this motion passes?
Well, then becomes a procedural issue because this really, if, if this was the Board of Finance meeting, Mary, right now, that question you asked would be more relevant. And that maybe could.
Well, I'll get to that. I'll get to them.
It might have been able to be done at the Board of Finance meeting.
I'll get to that.
So go ahead.
Okay. So why?
At the meeting on the, you know, the Budget Town Meeting, I'm not sure we really, that really has the authority to, or the ability to clearly vote on anything.
Are they going to call for voting? Like, that both sides of the budget are going to be presented? So there's not going to be any action taken there?
So.
So you're saying at a, at a town meeting, I'm not allowed to make a motion?
Well, I mean, I think you can make the motion. And I'd have to figure out the procedural aspect because the, after the referendum is the next day. But the Board of Finance will not have had a chance to act on it before the referendum. And that's kind of the procedure here.
All right, so let's get to the Board of Fin-
See, it's really about a vote that actually binds the Board of Finance. They would have to meet and then propose a new budget, and then that would have to be, would actually go to the referendum.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, so I want to go on to the Board of Finance angle on this. So the Board of Finance works very hard, and we appreciate them. However, after the budget failed, the next night at the Board of Finance meeting, the board spent hours and hours coming up with declinations and increased some projected revenues. So they worked, like I said, for three hours in front of the public in a transparent manner, which we really appreciated. But it was not inclusive. So, meaning all the changes were made and the budget was voted upon before public comment. And one of those changes was the addition, or the change, or whatever, of the two police officers unfunded to the employment table. So like I said, the changes, the discussions, and the vote occurred before public comment. And so that is why a motion that I'm discussing is needed to add the two firefighters unfunded to the employment table. That that, the only place to make that would be at the June tenth budget hearing.
All right, I think what we could do, we can talk to Jeff, okay? But the way it would have to be positioned would be, and Jeff would have to guide us on this, Sally and Bill, that we would add the two in the employment table, but the fire department would have to have a revised budget showing that that cost subtracted from somewhere else. To, to keep the dollars the same.
Right. See, what, what you're missing in the puzzle is that the two police officers were in the original budget for half-year. So they weren't added, they were just kept in and unfunded so that the, the wages related, the wages on the full-time line related to them as half-year was, was reduced by, it was seventy-something. It was one of the original, you were at the meeting, you, you know, the Republican majority went first with their proposed declinations. And that was in there as one of their stated declinations that Chairman Dahini explained. He explained them all, one by one. And when he got to that point, he said, but they're being kept in the table, when I explained why, so they're, they're being preserved. But they were in the original budget. The original recommended budget did not have any new firefighters in it.
Okay, I got to stop you right there. I agree.
Okay.
I'm not saying I disagree. What I'm saying is, so after that original budget was, you know, voted upon and approved by the Board of Finance, we went and we had a budget meeting, Budget Town Meeting. And it is at this, that meeting where I wasn't the only one that stood up there and wanted to put two firefighters into the budget. There was other residents who wanted to support public safety, not just the police officers, but the firefighters as well, especially since it has been two years since we have included two firefighters in the budget. And currently, in case some people are not aware, there are four shifts on the fire department. One shift has eleven firefighters, three shifts have ten firefighters. These staffing numbers are not in compliance with National Fire Safety Standards.
Those standards are not required. Those are, those are recommended standards. They are, no municipalities obligated to follow those standards.
Okay.
There are some standards of that act that have been adopted by municipalities and by states, specifically their fire, fire code, building code provisions. But provisions for staffing are recommended by a private, this is a private nonprofit made up of firefighters that want more firefighters.
Yeah.
It is, so I, I take issue with people who say we're in violation. They're not required. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be functioning.
Well, we are not in accordance to the recommendations.
As a fire department if we were in violation of required staffing. We are in compliance with the state of Connecticut's emergency, what is it? Emergency Medical Services, they're the ones that oversee the fire department. And we are not in violation of any of their requirements. So I take issue with anyone who stands and says we're in violation.
I don't believe I used the word violation.
Okay, what, what?
You can rewind the tape.
Okay.
But it's not here. So I did not say that.
Not in compliance, I believe you said.
Right, right.
Okay.
Which is different than violation.
Okay, so we're not in compliance, but we don't have to be in compliance. We're not required.
When you listen to the experts, people who are fire chiefs, people who know when they go to a fire, they responding to a fire, they know X amount of firefighters are needed, you know, to make sure that the, that everybody is as safe as possible. And human life can be saved. And they cannot stay there, they only have two tanks, and then they're done. And so, you know, but anyway, I.
But that's why, excuse me, that's why we've increased the fire department staffing by ten new firefighter positions since two thousand eighteen, which no other department in the town has seen that percentage increase.
But we also spent how many decades not, not doing that? And we also know that we have had two deaths.
Yes.
And, and we have some firefighters that are extended medical leave. So, you know, that, that's a fact, those are factors as well.
Mary, what's further complicated too is, you know, we used to have a much more, you know, a much larger number of volunteer.
Volunteer fires, that's right.
Which filled it out, and if my members.
Over a hundred, and now we're, what, less than twenty?
Right.
I mean, and that, you know, would fill out.
And they all work full-time?
Our fire chief has pointed out too that, you know, from at least a standard, a standard standpoint, you know, even a fire baby, for us, for just a regular fire, that you might need as many as fifteen firefighters, you know, to adequately control and raise. So even getting to eleven, we're, without the, you know, we still need some, sometimes as many as four or more, you know, to round out what we need. And that's where the mutual aid comes in too, not only.
Which we have to reciprocate too, and so that's not easy.
In terms of us reciprocating, and they're reciprocating, and then with all the other, you know, so it's all part of a very complicated arrangement.
Yes, so I just want to.
I disagree.
Wait a minute, I just want to get back to the Board of Finance if I could.
Sure.
So when we're talking about, well, the Board of Finance is, you know, they got to put it in the employment table, and, you know, they not going to have an opportunity to do it. They had an opportunity to do it. And, and you listened, did they listen to the people who got up there, including myself, saying we would like two firefighters put in the, in the budget? No, the next time we had the, the Board of Finance meeting, nothing, zero, nothing. Nothing was discussed, like, like we never spoke. So, so when they had the opportunity to do it, they didn't do it. And they know that the people want it, but they didn't do it. So this is why we're in a situation where, you know, I would like to know from the town attorney if this motion is made, you know, I would like to know, you know, is it, is it possible? Since we're, if the, you know, conversations were had with the police chief, and I'm sure conversations can be had with the fire chief, as far as, you know, can this be done? And I'm sure the answer is yes. So, but I did want to mention one other thing that I haven't mentioned yet. And I believe there's a situation that we had in this town. We've been in town for thirty-four years, and so we were there when it happened. So this is a past practice, so relative to a budget meeting or hearing that took place. So way back when we had, Vince Palmieri was the finance director. So he was, you know, running things. And so he decided he was going to put in the budget for the fire department a utility pickup truck for the fire department. The fire department wanted an ambulance. And so it was, there was a lot of upset about this individual who's not a fire chief, he's not head of that department, decided that he was going to do this to the budget. So I was there when there was a motion, well, people spoke out about being not in favor of this utility pickup truck for the fire department. And I was there when a motion was made to reject the pickup truck for the ambulance. There was a second, I believe there was discussion. And then there was a vote by the audience, the members of the public, and the motion passed. And that particular motion did impact to the budget. So what I'm saying, what I'm proposing is, with my general understanding of the budget and the budget process and the contractual overtime replacement line item, which is over a million dollars now, I believe, and it is my understanding, that this change would be net neutral, that it won't change the budget. But I am certainly wanting the town attorney to get involved, but I also want the fire chief to get involved. So this is, this is what, this, we're here because, like I said, about the Board of Finance.
Where that happened, you know, this is not a, it's not a special town meeting where people vote.
Well, that wasn't a special town meeting.
But that, that may have been done incorrectly, going back to Palmieri. Going back to Palmieri, you know. So, you know, it's, it's not something that actually we're taking a vote on when we're going to have the budget meeting. It's not a special town meeting.
So there is.
You know, we have a special town meeting, like to reconcile transfers, you know, among light items that are over twenty-five thousand every year. That is a vote that actually, you know, as many as people as want to come up, but very, or can go to that, but don't come. That actually is a vote, you know, that's done at a special town meeting.
Okay, so.
This is more just a budget meeting to explain the budget so people can vote the next day.
Okay, so there, there is no meeting where the moderator or the, I forget what, what status Stacy Yarborough is, when she talks about bringing forth the first part, you know, like the, the budget for the town side, and then the budget for the, for the education side, for a total budget of the money, and then there is no, none of that's going to happen. It's just, here it is, and there's, there's nothing going to happen at that time. Does it normally happen if we have a second meeting? And then she says, I remember her saying something about for a budget referendum to take place on such and such a day, and such and such a time, at such and such a location. So that's not going to happen?
What happens is, and if you look at the agenda. What happens is, and if you look at the agenda for the board, the Budget Town Meeting on the tenth, it'll say, just as it said for the May thirteenth Budget Town Meeting, that the Budget Town Meeting will adjourn to a referendum. And we also vote about the, the tax due dates. But we did that in May, so we don't have to do that again. This is just to present the new budget and then to adjourn to a referendum, which is unfortunately, but necessarily, the next day. So I, I don't know about your plan for the motion. It really will depend on the town attorney. It seems to be similar in procedural context that we went through with the ordinance. So that's why it may be ruled out of order and not voted on. But that would be up to the town attorney to decide. But I did wanna make one comment. The chief made that proposal to the Board of Finance about saving three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in contractual, if, if there were four. That was the, that was two years ago and that was the year that we got two. And then we didn't get any last year and there are none again this year. So you're absolutely right. But we did get two more, the, two years ago. So, and if I, I don't have the budget book with me, but it is, in the employment table, there are forty-two firefighter positions, not forty-one. So whether they're full or not, I don't know. But the bud, there's budgeted currently for forty-two, which would be ten, ten, eleven, eleven. You said it's ten, 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 eleven. It's budgeted for ten, ten, eleven, eleven. And quite honestly, I was surprised that for the current year of twenty-three, twenty-four, last year's budget season, that the other two didn't come in. But, but they didn't because I guess there were budget considerations. We had a significant mill rate increase for, for this current year. But anyway, the employment table currently has forty-two. But it might, it might not be, one might not be filled.
I think that's the current one.
Yeah, thirty-three, five, and four is forty-two.
It's forty-two.
Yeah.
Between firefighters, lieutenants, and captains.
Yeah, they're all in the, the union and, and they're, yeah. It's, so we're currently budgeted when we had those first, we originally had two come in per year for eight, making it go from eight per shift to ten. Then the following year, these two came in. So it's budgeted for forty-two, for ten, ten, eleven, eleven. It might not, one position might not be filled. So maybe someone is in a fire academy. We have a fire commissioner here who might, I don't know, might know. But we are budgeted for forty-two.
I see. Okay, well, so, but, but again, I think it's very important that people understand about that line item, which is the contractual overtime replacement line item. So as I said earlier, when you have those three shifts with the ten men and one firefighter is out, vacation, personal, sick, whatever, you now have a shift of nine. So that creates the mandatory overtime. So you're taking firefighters who are off, 'cause they already worked their shifts, their shift. And then you're saying, come in, come back to work. And, you know, it's just would be, like I said, healthier and safer. And so what I believe, and it is my understanding, that this would be a net neutral to the budget. It's not gonna affect the mill rate, not gonna affect the budget. And clearly, it makes no sense to me, okay? And I'm not an accountant or anything, but if we're gonna be having an overtime, contractual overtime replacement line item, which is over a million dollars now, I would rather have the firefighters working, okay? And not have to hit that line and use that money to pay for these firefighters. And I think that that's the, the thought process here. And where I'm only asking, okay, to add the two firefighters to the employment table unfunded. That's it. So I think conversations need to be had. But, you know, if it's gonna be, I would like the town attorney to verify that it's out of order. But I would like to know, when, when is it in order? When? Because obviously the Board of Finance had their opportunity to discuss the two firefighters. They knew what they were doing when they had the two police officers in the employment table unfunded. They heard what the people said, a number of people who got up and said, we want two firefighters also put in the budget. And they chose not to discuss the firefighters in the employment table unfunded or at all. That was it. So they had their opportunity. They're not listening. So when is it appropriate for me to make this motion that the people can vote and the people can say to the Board of Finance, this is a town meeting form of government. We want two firefighters in this budget, in the employment table unfunded. The fire chief can speak for himself and he can say, I can do this, this is doable. It's not gonna impact this budget. It's not gonna impact the budget, net neutral. So when can I do this?
Well, we gotta check the, to me, it's a procedural issue. We have to check with Jeff. We'll see if we can get Jeff at the meeting, okay?
Check with Jeff.
Right, we have to check with Jeff.
Because I think the Board of Finance is to make those decisions. So I think the public can-
Yeah, I mean, I understand what Mary's saying, the public. But, you know, in every single government, the public can speak, but the elected officials, in this case, Board of Finance, have the final decision.
Yeah.
So that's the way it works.
They chose not to do it.
And they chose not to do it. So if the public doesn't like it, when it's time to come up for vote again, then the public exercises their right at that point. Because the Board of Finance gets bombarded with requests from everywhere, all these different departments. And so they have, they're elected to make the judge, and I'm on the Board of Finance, so I know this. And by the way, every day, people are asking me for something more, every day. And at some point in time, you can't give everybody everything they want. So the elected officials are in place to say either yes or no. And that's the way it works in all governments. But we will check it out because I understand what you're saying. It's, to me, it's more procedural. And we'll find out from Jeff, and we'll ask Jeff to be at that meeting, okay? And we're gonna let you know before the meeting what Jeff says.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay?
I'll give Val my cellphone in case you don't have it, but I think you do.
We'll call him tomorrow, Mary. Jeff?
Yes, okay. I appreciate that.
And I think, you know, you know it's true that you've come to and expressed that at a number of Board of Finance meetings.
I have.
You know, and unfortunately, it doesn't help us-
End this meeting.
Doesn't help us, like, if we have eleven and two are out, to go to nine, we still need to get one to get back to the minimum staffing at ten. So that's where it makes it even, it still gives us a little, it gives us a one-person cushion, but not a two. I mean, ideally, we'd have twelve or, twelve or more.
The two terrible deaths, you know what I'm saying? Things would be different if we didn't have that.
I know.
We will check it out and we will let you know.
Okay, I, I appreciate it, but just again, I appreciate the Board of Finance and I appreciate the hours. I was here. That was an over-three-hour meeting. It was very hot in here. There was a lot of discussion. But that was, that item about the two firefighters at all, new firefighters, was not discussed. I was there the whole time. I saw it. So they're not listening to the people. And it's a matter of the public's health and safety, which includes the firefighters. Because even though it's not a requirement, it is a recommendation and the recommendation is for the purposes of safety. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Any other comments? Jenny Caldwell.
Jenny Caldwell, sixty-nine, Kimberly Circle. I just wanted to answer the question about the firefighters and why we've only had one. With the, the death of Anthony DeSimone, his, his, the firefighter who was hired for that position was sworn in today. So we have only had one, one shift that was for eleven. There was a short period of time where there was a second shift of eleven. But then when Anthony DeSimone passed away or died in line of duty, that position, then that shift went back down to ten.
Right, I was just trying to point out that it's budgeted for forty-two. That's all.
And it doesn't really help the budget because his position has had to be, you know, you were using the contractual replacement line item, which is higher than having a firefighter with their salary versus overtime. So, so that's the reason why there's only one shift. And the chief did provide for the Board of Finance, and I don't know if you got this, Sally, he did do a calculation to show them how much was saved in the nine months that we had the one shift at eleven. And then he also did a calculation of what was saved in the one shift that had eleven firefighters for the three months. And so that, that was sent on to the Board of Finance. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then just to go back to this idea of trying to get the word out there for the referendum, I don't know if there's any possibility, and I don't know, we might have done this already, but, you know, you've got that sign on the corner that people can sort of rent out. So, you know, if they have an event coming up.
Oh, on the green.
On the green.
Like it advertises like a play or something.
Up there right now and they've had other, like the play when it's up. I wonder whether a sign letting, you know, letting the public know that the referendum is coming and that's what day? Whether that'd be helpful, 'cause it's, it's big and you see it.
So we've done that, Jenny, in the past. And the feedback I got from the couple of people that say we're not doing enough is, well, we don't drive that down that side of town. So, so do I, this is the feedback I'm getting. You know, we have to do more. Well, what is it? What more can we do? As I said earlier, we can't put signs just randomly all over the town, so.
Yeah, I mean, this was just a thought. I mean, if it doesn't really cost anything, we can put it up. And I do think it's sort of in the center of town. People come to the, the concerts on Tuesday. It'd be a reminder, especially you're at the concert on Tuesday. Go run down to the rec, to, to the rec center and, and vote now. That could be the introduction.
See, and if we approved those electronic billboards on ninety-one, we could have asked the billboard company to do that as a public service. And that would have been big electronic flashing please.
Yeah, unfortunately, though, like people on ninety-one, how many people are gonna be, you know, just north of you?
We all get on ninety-one sometimes.
And then the other, just two questions, you know, thoughts that I came across were, in terms of the senior center, I don't know whether seniors, sometimes getting a ride to the polls is a problem. So I don't know whether the senior center offers rides. I know that there are some towns that they do that, so.
We've done it.
Okay.
And I think we're, we're getting another bus that should be coming in in the next sixty days or so. That'll help that too, so.
And then I had just two, a quick question about the referendum. I know that the absentee ballots will happen if people are not in town. Is there early voting with this referendum?
No.
No, early, early voting does not apply to any referendums, budget or bonding.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, just elections, to the, to the elections.
And then I just really wanna get clarification, 'cause I'm, I'm a little confused about where the money is coming from for those two police officers. If the, if the police chief gave a budget and we're voting on the budget, but he's found money, where, where did he find the money? Like, where is the money coming from? Is it some other item on, in his budget is no longer getting funded?
He's gonna reduce the expenses on a couple of line items to fund those positions, so.
So he is removing some parts of the budget. And will that be in the budget when we go to the hearing? Will that be in the, the book so we can see what's getting, what he's, what he's removing in order to cover those positions?
I'm not sure. I have to check that. I'm not into that granular detail, to be honest with you. All I look at is, in this case, as long as the numbers don't change, as long as there's no additions, I don't micromanage all the lines prior to a referendum. As long as nothing changes.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that for the public, we were given a list of this is what's being funded. It's, it's-
Well, we, Bill earlier alluded to the annual town meeting where we do budget transfers under twenty thousand within a department and, and over twenty thousand, intro, all these different ways of, because this is very common in municipal budgeting to do these transfers. And so I would think it would be handled that way as a transfer at the annual town meeting. Which is in September.
Which is in September. So after the budget-
But that's would be for the, the September coming up would be for the prior fiscal year.
So we won't, so when we vote on the referendum, we don't really know where that, where the money for the police officers that are being, that will be hired or where that's coming from?
Probably not.
Okay.
No, the budget is our best estimate of what we will need for each of the five-hundred line items. And some are on point, some are over, some are under. And so he has found ways, you know, he's gonna get a certain amount for his budget, whatever it is. I don't remember the bottom line. And if he could do this without increasing that and the two positions have been reserved by the Board of Finance, then, then he could fund them. And it would be handled by a transfer.
That's, that's a possibility that could happen, yes, so.
One la, one last question, and it goes back to this town meeting piece and procedure-wise that I wanna kind of understand. So there are two action items on, on that, on what's the meeting notice right now. The, the first one is some, I, I don't know the exact wording, something about authorizing the recommendations made by the Board of Finance. So if, so does the pub, is the, at the town meeting, are we all voting on that? And what are we really voting on?
There's no voting at the town meeting.
It says, it is, it, the wording of it says that, that there are two things that are coming before us in-
There's two agenda items for discussion and then we adjourn.
So there are agenda items, but we don't vote on them?
Right. At the first Budget Town Meeting, all we voted on was, which customarily at our annual Budget Town Meeting, is the install, tax installments, the due dates. The due dates for the real estate taxes and the due dates for the car taxes. And we already voted in favor of, of those. So it's not on the agenda for the June tenth Budget Town Meeting.
The way it's worded on that notice is that there are two items that are coming before the town meeting. And, and they're listed specifically, two separate things. So it, it looked like you were supposed to vote on them, but maybe that's not, maybe that's not what, what they are.
Yeah, wait a minute. It says to take action on the budget recommended. And then it says at the conclusion that, to adjourn the said town meeting and submit the question regarding the budget to referendum. So that's-
Voting on saying it's a referendum.
So number one is, is to, to act upon, in other words, we're taking action on the budget. Number two is the action we're taking is to-
Adjourn to the referendum.
Adjourn and send it to referendum.
So if they, if they're action items, we vote on them, right?
No, they're, no, no. It says that we will be voting by referendum. The action will be to adjourn the meeting and vote at referendum. And we don't need to, as Sally said, we don't need to do the other. The one item we would have voted on, we already voted on, so we don't need to vote on it again. And that would be the establishment of the due dates and the number of installments for the property taxes. Since that was already voted on, we don't need to vote on that.
Yeah, I think the notice that we put in the paper for this even said we won't be voting on it.
I added that at the bottom.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yep, to, to eliminate the confusion.
Okay, so even though it said action, it's not, we're not actually taking an action. We're just, so the meeting is really just information.
We never vote on the budget at the Budget Town Meeting.
Never.
Okay. So when, when do we actually, 'cause, I mean, we talk about this a lot, about how the town meeting for the government, we're all, you know, we're, you know, it gives us the ability to vote on, on things. So under what, what are those, are they hearings that we vote on? When, when are we actually voting as a town?
So budgets or referendum?
Right, no, I understand that.
Town meeting votes, ordinances.
Are at town meetings.
Like the, the, these.
The tax abatement.
Tax abatement.
We vote on ordinances. We would vote on-
We'd vote on a contingency withdrawal at the town meeting if we had an emergency?
So town- So, town meetings, though, are, in general, are designed, most of the time, we're going to be voting on something at a town meeting.
Except a refer, except a budget, not voting on budgets.
Right.
But the referendum is, is the budget vote.
Okay.
So, any ordinance that comes forward, any expenditure out of the contingency fund as an emergency.
Or any other special, we had a special town meeting where, a few years ago, in this room, where we authorized seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our fund balance to purchase.
Right.
A fire truck.
Right, bonding, okay, whether we bond for a broken bridge, that's a town meeting.
Town meeting has.
Right.
Okay, ordinances, the, the middle school project, we had a lot of, of special meetings where we authorized initial attorney, allocations for attorney fees and, and design and, and engineering, we had town meetings for, for things like that.
Okay.
Where those are what you are thinking of as an action item, meaning to take a vote on to approve.
Yeah, it was confusing, because it says we're going to act upon, I think of action items of, you vote on an action item, but that's not the case for them.
Right, well, when I was on the Board of Finance in eighty-five to eighty-nine, the budget was voted on by the hundred people who showed up at the budget town meeting, and people didn't like it anymore, and switched to referendum, so, being more democratic.
Right, I'm not, I'm not debating that, I, I just was, I was, because it's an action item, in my mind, I thought we were voting on something, but.
Right.
And I feel like at some point, we voted on some stuff that had to do with the, the budget and in-town meetings, but I, I'm.
They must have been special town meetings for special appropriations.
Okay.
Or like, like the fire engine that we did, maybe we did one using the contingency for a fire rescue, I thought we did one.
Yeah, we did.
Also.
Yeah.
You know, we've got so many, it's hard to remember them all.
I think that we finally cleared it up, so.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Any other thoughts? Yes, Al, Al Warren.
Al Warren, Charles Court. My thirty-one years in the fire department.
Thank you.
I never saw anybody get held over. My contract called for it, if, if it gets called in overtime, nobody is held over to do additional hours on the job, so that, I mean, that's contract stuff. But my thirty-one years on the job, nobody was ever held over, it was against the contract. If you was doing so, you put added liabilities on the city. They get the Valley Service Road, they're putting in electrical now, the lights, UI?
Yes, I worked with the UI to illuminate that road, because it was so dark, we're trying to curtail the illegal dumping, Al. We've had volunteer groups that have cleaned up Valley Service Road, been probably in the last, three times in the last five weeks.
Oh, the dumping area is terrible.
And I spent tens of thousands of dollars before that with Public Works, cleaning up the bad behavior of people who were dumping all this garbage there.
Yeah.
And I'm not too happy about it.
Yeah, with the tires, they started with the tires again.
Right.
Yep.
So, we're putting streetlights out there, and maybe twenty-two, twenty-eight polls, and I hope that's a deterrent to, to the drag racing that goes there, and the illegal dumping, and it's a public safety issue now, because a lot of cars are going back and forth there.
Well, how about with the ATVs and the, and the bikes?
Yeah, the police are monitoring it, the police are there, police are patrolling, and that's what the police are trying to do, and right now, they're still doing it, but hopefully that the lights will help that, and the police have that in a regular patrol to try to stop that.
Okay. Well, we already spoke about what, what it was, what a dump it was, right? Besides that, there's, there's no animal life down there at all, it's non-existent. I mean, you saw what the old ATVs and everything did on both sides of Valley Service Road, it's, everything's gone, it's gone, there's no wildlife or anything down there. They absolutely destroyed it. You can't see what's inside, you can go down Valley Service Road and look out the window, but if you take those trails, we go up in the back and see what, how they destroyed it, it's, it's amazing.
Yeah, in the winter, when there aren't leaves, you could see it better, the trails.
Oh, yeah, but the stuff that's in the back, too.
Okay.
It's, yeah, that's, the other thing is, when it comes to the, the firemen, with them working the extra duty, do they, there's holdovers on your department, right?
I, you know.
Well, in other words.
There are holdovers, many of them are, are agreed to by the fire department personnel on a holdover, so I don't know the exact percentage.
That's contract stuff, I think, because, you know, with us, like I said, there was never any holdovers or anything like that. Who does the electrical inspections in the town, town buildings?
Well, we would have our building department do that, so, if there's a problem, then they would, they would check it out, and if there's an issue, we'd.
Are the building departments licensed electricians?
Yeah, we have, their building officials are licensed plumbers, licensed electricians, so they could diagnose the problem, we probably would have to outsource it to an electrical contractor.
So, fire marshal inspect the buildings?
The fire marshal inspects a lot of buildings, so, he's out in the field, restaurants, let's say, businesses, and the fire department's always very cooperative in, in coming here, looking at fire extinguishers, and doing whatever they do, so, yes.
Okay, now, so, apparently, you're not aware if there's an illegal hookup in one of the town buildings?
Where would that be? Where?
In the other building.
The annex, the annex?
Yeah, the annex.
Specifically, where would that be? It's right there, I'm aware of those.
Okay.
There's a, there's a printing on there, where, where the.
It's being addressed.
It's being addressed? Okay.
Yeah, they picked that, they did pick that up, it's been addressed, been corrected.
The extension cords aren't allowed to go, be plugged in and go up through a suspended ceiling.
Yeah, yeah, the.
Electrician was here.
Yeah, he was here, right.
A while ago, he took care of that.
Yeah, so that's been taken, that's being taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, seen the other public, oh, okay.
Mary White, Summer Lane, I just have one more question. So, listening to comments made, I have a question, and the question is, would it be in order for the people to make a motion at the budget town meeting, the one where we take the vote on the car tax installments? I understand it already happened, but this is.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand the question, though.
What do you mean?
Okay, so, we're talking about the meeting Monday.
Right.
We're talking about how, if this motion that I'm talking about, would it be net neutral to the budget of adding two firefighters to the employment table unfunded, we're talking about, I can go ahead and make that motion, but it'll be ruled out of order, probably. So, we also heard in this discussion about there being action items, but not specifically where the people vote. So, we also heard that there was an action item where the people voted, and that already took place at the budget meeting where the car tax installments were presented, when they were going to be due, and so the people voted on that. So, my question is, again, at that meeting, where we know that there's going to be action taken on the car tax installments, okay, by the people, you're going to vote yes or no, would it be ruled in order, in other words, like, okay, for the people to make a motion during public comment, because that's when we can speak, but obviously, before this, or, I'm not sure, before, whatever, but during this particular meeting, that's the question. I don't know if it's a question for the town attorney, but it's a separate question.
I think I understand now, so you're, you're, you're asking this regarding if we, this was the previous meeting, not this coming meeting?
Well, the meeting where we voted on the car tax installment, so there was an action and a vote taken by the people, versus what's happening Monday, which is an informational meeting, there will be no vote, from what I'm told, that the meeting will adjourn with nobody saying yay, nobody saying, you know, no, and it will be adjourned into referendum the next day.
Right.
So, that's a different type of meeting than the meeting I'm talking about, which already took place.
Val's an expert on this, Val, go ahead.
It's the same meeting, the only reason why we're not voting again on the motor vehicle taxes is because we already voted on it, but it's the budget meeting, it's, instead of the annual budget meeting, it's now become the special budget meeting, the only difference is, because the first one, the budget, did not pass, we are duplicating exactly what we did at the previous meeting at this meeting, except for the fact that we already voted on those motor vehicle and property tax installments, so we don't need to vote on it again. But that item was listed in the original call for the original meeting on the fourteenth as an action item to vote on, it is not listed again in this meeting, because it was already acted upon.
Yes.
But the meeting, the context of the meeting is the same meeting, it's just, we're having it again, because the first meeting, the budget failed.
Okay, so.
First referendum, right.
Yeah, that's, that's a statement of, of facts, so I understand that. My question goes back to, to that meeting where we had the action by the, you know, the, the meeting, the, you're going to vote yes for the car tax installment, so it's different, although I understand it's part of the same meeting that we're having on Monday, but there was an action item where we physically voted, we either passed it or we didn't pass it. So, that is what I'm asking, if I were to have done this at that time versus Monday, when it sounds like I'm going to be ruled out of order, okay, but that's what I want to know, so.
It's the same.
But I, I, I understand you're saying it's the same, but I'm saying it's not exactly the same, because we did vote.
So, you're trying.
In that other meeting, so, that's what I'm saying, there was action taken, the people were, were, it was.
So, you wanted to.
Procedure, we voted.
You wanted to piggyback on that item that we did vote on.
I'm saying, I think the door is open, because we are taking, in that meeting, we are taking an action, legal action.
Right.
Voting yes or no to the car tax installments.
Right.
So, what I'm saying is, is it, would it be in order to have presented this motion, made this motion at that meeting, and I would like the, the town attorney to answer.
I think it's the same question, in other words, when we ask the town attorney.
It won't matter.
It would be the same question, it wouldn't matter if it was the meeting on the, on the thirteenth, or the meeting on, on June tenth, it's the same question, the meetings are the same. So, if he said, if he says yes, you can do that, then it would, would have applied to that meeting as well as this meeting. If he says no, it would be no for that meeting as well as the June tenth, it's the same question, both meetings would be treated the same.
And what you have to remember, Mary, is at the March, excuse me, May thirteenth meeting, the, the votes, the vote that took place on the tax due dates and installments was an agenda item. Someone made a motion, it was seconded, there was asked any further discussion, of course, there was none, and everybody voted aye. It's, it's, a statute requires us to do this, otherwise we can't collect taxes, so, we, we have to, to do that. So, I don't think that, I understand the theory of your question, you're trying to say, well, there was voting then.
Right, yep.
Could I have slipped it in when there was voting? But that voting was very specific for that reason, it was agended for that reason, and authorized by statute, so that we could collect taxes, otherwise passing a budget doesn't really help us if we can't collect taxes.
Yeah, yeah, so, I understand.
But we're going to, we're going to talk to Jeff, okay?
Yeah, because what I'm hearing is, is even though this is a town meeting form of government, the body, which is the Board of Finance, they do what they want to do and what they believe is in the best interest for the financial, you know, security of the town, and if they are ignoring the public safety issue relative to there not being enough firefighters per shift, there's nothing that we can do. We can talk about it to them, which we did at, during public comment, but they've already made their changes, they've already had their discussions, they've already done their voting, and I did, and it just falls on deaf ears. And what else can we do? Well, we can come here to the Board of Selectmen meeting, where a lot of people watch it, and we can say, hey, you know, let's, what can we do to get these two firefighters on the employment table unfunded, what can we do? So, trying to come up with a way to have a voice, where the people can actually say, hey, Board of Finance, you're not listening to us, you're not seeing this, this big problem of public, the public safe, health and safety, you're not seeing it, you're not listening to us. So, that's why I thought to present this at the public, at the, the budget hearing, whether it's the town meeting, whether it's the Monday, or in the past, I'm still hearing no. So, it's just, so now, what, what do we do? Wait until the Board of Finance people come up for, you know, reelection and not vote them in? Meanwhile, we still have a public health and safety issue.
Well, that's to my.
So, it's a little frustrating when we have, we're, we're, we're okay with funding the contractual overtime line item, okay, which is now over a million dollars, we're okay with doing that, because we have to, versus why don't we allow the chief to use that money that we're spending, we're paying for it, and hire the firefighters? I don't see the logic, I don't see the, how the math makes sense, and it's very frustrating.
One of the reasons why the contractual obligation line, one of the reasons why it keeps going up, is because we've hired more people in the past five fiscal years, and those people get personal time, bereavement time, vacation time, so the number of hours of contractual obligation have increased. I, I have also seen the chief's workshop documents, and every year, he puts in an estimate of, of contractual obligation, anticipated hours, and he has told me publicly at Board of, at Fire Commission meetings, part of the reason is that line is going up, is because as you hire more people, there's more time off that has to be contractually obligated to cover. It's, you know, I understand your issue, that if it's eleven down to ten, you know, you don't have to cover all the time, but there's so many more workers now, and so many more hours that have to be contractually obligated to cover, that that's part of the reason why it's climbing as, as well, so it's, it's not just.
The other thing, too, is you go back, if I go back, if my memory's correct, if I go back fourteen years, we just had an, you know, which really, there was always an overtime issue, or at least appeared to be an overtime issue, for the fire department, which really, so I think we create, the fire, the fire department.
They separated, yeah.
Just to show that it's really, it's two different things.
Contractal versus emergency overtime, yeah.
We do, we do have an overtime line.
Is that really true overtime? It's contr, you know, in that way, at least, we know that, and that, at least, I think for the other members of the voting public, too, I think actually now allows you to have the discussion that we're having, that, you know, what do we do to get rid of that, because there's maybe other ways around that, other than, by maybe having more firemen than, than having a contractual obligation, just like you're arguing.
Yeah, so, I just, I don't know how many more years the Board of Finance is going to not, you know, put two firefighters in the employment table unfunded, I think, you know, I think that that, and, and we can't tell them that until after they've done their business and they've done their voting, and then it's public comment. I mean, another resident made a suggestion, realizing the exact same thing I'm talking about, he realized the same thing, and he suggested to them, you know, to have public comment prior to them voting, because, you know, people have. Because, you know, people have ideas, and, you know, some of them are good ideas and some of them are not good ideas. But at least get the feedback from the board as to why the resident's idea is not good, you know what I mean? Or why they're not doing it. In this way, there was silence. There was silence when I was presenting the information I was presenting during public comment.
Well, that, that's the purpose, really, of, of the public hearing that is also required by, by charter, where people can speak.
And they did.
Yeah, and, yeah, I heard that.
You were there.
And they did. But, uh, you know, there are seven members of the Board of Finance, six elected to the Board of Finance, and Mike Frida as first selectman is a member and a voting member, one of the few boards that you are a voting member of. And, you know, the, um, you know, it's, it's, there's a Republican majority and a Democratic minority. And whoever, uh, has the votes is going to control the difficult, challenging decisions that we face every year between wants and needs and affordability. That's really what it comes down to.
Well, it does, you know, and I, I remain, remained silent the last ten minutes here, but I can tell you, the Board of Ed wanted seven point three percent. Public Works, we cut almost two million dollars out of them. So that we're bombarded with competing interests, Mary.
Sure.
For every Mary White that comes to this meeting, there's a hundred other people who won't come to the meeting, that they want something else, and they may not want the fire department. This is the thing that's happening here.
Until their house burnt down.
So, you know, uh, I, I'm a huge proponent of public safety. I think since I've been in office, I've put more money into the fire department than the last five first electmen in the history of North Haven.
Absolutely.
So, but it comes to the point where they have to make these tough decisions. And at a two-point, this is, this is the real reason, I think, it didn't happen. At a two point six five mil rate, they knew, we, we knew we weren't going to pass it. We tried, right? But, so it was, there were more add-ons over and above the two point six five, and we couldn't figure out what to cut to, to, to get down to a reasonable level.
Mm-hmm.
So there's competing interests here.
And I would like to hear Board of Finance members say to me, why adding two firefighters in the employment table unfunded, net neutral to the budget? Why they won't do that? Why they won't talk about it? Why it's just not even a thought? That's, that's what I would like them to hear, but by the time, it's time for me to public comment, they're all done. They don't, they don't have to respond to me, and most of them don't.
No, we understand that. That's the point that, like you mentioned earlier, even Sherman Katz has been saying that for years, so.
Yeah.
I have one other comment for you, Mary, uh, because I, I respect your, uh, diligent support of the fire department. But, um, this current fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four, the, none were in the budget, as you, as you know. None were requested by the chief at the budget workshop in January of twenty twenty-three.
No, no new firefighters?
No new firefighters were requested at the workshop. They might have been in some paperwork that he had submitted in December.
I kind of heard that they are requested but not granted, so must have been put somewhere.
But I was shocked at the fire department workshop when none were, no personnel were requested. They, uh, at, you know, you could re-watch that hearing, uh, that budget workshop, the firefight, the fire workshop is usually fairly early, so it would have been in January of twenty twenty-three. For the twenty-three, twenty-four, I, I don't recall any being requested. And I was shocked because the previous year, he got the two on that argument that it would save ninety thousand per shift, and that next year, there, there were none requested.
Anywhere? He didn't request them anywhere?
They weren't requested at the, verbally at the workshop before the Board of Finance.
They were, they were not, I'm sorry.
They were not verbally requested.
Was it in the documents anywhere?
I thought I saw the early documents that it was in there, but it was not pursued.
Well, it doesn't mean he didn't want the two firefighters. It's just, I'm sure, that, that meeting is, he's got a lot of PowerPoint slides to present, and the whole department, he's presenting all the needs and the wants and the, so, and so on and so forth. So if it's in the documents, it doesn't mean that he didn't want them. It means probably he was trying to, you know, get a lot of information out in a short period of time, when people want to go home, it's a Saturday or whatever. And, uh, so I kind of disagree with that, not having seen the documents or seen that whole meeting.
Seeing the workshop, yeah.
The workshop, but, but if it's in the documents, then I'm positive he wants them. I just can't imagine him saying, nah, I don't want any, I, I don't want a love man shift, nah, I don't want them.
I don't remember them being pursued. Do, do you recall?
Yeah, I don't recall. I mean, we've had so many discussions on this.
But if it's in the documents, then he wanted them, so...
Right, but...
All I can tell you is that's how I started this conversation. There was a great meeting yesterday, we're looking to put a plan together for next year to start phasing in the Northeast company with the decline of the volunteers, so...
There you go.
So the, even the union president said to me today, or the union vice president, that was a very productive meeting. So we're going to show them some progress, which includes trying to retrofit the facility a little bit, uh, prior to a phase-in of the company up there, so. So we will get back to you, though, with the Jeff Donarfield.
Thanks.
When it comes to the, uh, Amazon, the Board of Selectmen in North Haven authorized local financial incentives for the project, when it was first proposed, which includes a seven year phase-in. Every, every year, do you, is, you get the same amount from Amazon, or does it change?
Well, on the person...
With it or taxes?
No, on the real estate, it's a seven year phase-in, we're probably a year five right now, so it bounces up about twenty-five percent a year.
Okay.
But personal property, there was no phase-in.
All right. And you got a statement that was made by a fellow named Frida, was a, okay. And the influx of the total tax, total, total tax dollars are allowed, we need to maintain the same mil rate for years to come.
And we did. Unfortunately, it, the time ran out.
This is total, though.
Right. So let me explain this to you, okay? I made the statement, Frida made the statement.
Yeah, good.
But what we didn't anticipate was the request for more personnel, more, more, we needed more police, we need more fire, the cost of government with wages. So at some point in time, after about four to five years, the Amazon revenue incrementally was outweighed by the incremental cost that everybody requests from this government.
Okay.
That's the reason.
Okay. All right.
Okay, very good. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.